If the hallway is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each work session item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to our city clerk, Kim Nichols. I'd like to call for a moment of silence, silent meditation for those who were injured, specifically for the family of the gentleman who was killed during Saturday's events in Pennsylvania. We'll start off our agenda with a Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development update from our executive director, Dave Ryan. Welcome, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the opportunity to be with the City Council and the mayor and staff and these folks. I'd like to highlight just a few of the larger projects we're working on these days, especially as it relates to economic impact to the city of Salisbury and even taxable base to the city of Salisbury.
Mr. Ryan, just for those who aren't familiar with SWED, do you mind just giving a brief overview of what SWED is?
Sure, sure. SWED is S-W-E-D. It's a little easier to, quicker to say, I would say, than Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development. But we were founded in 1968 to help attract and retain and diversify the industrial base and the economy and the job base in the greater Salisbury area. And so I'm the second director in 55 years or so, and I think, hi Amanda, how are you? Yeah, council. And I think in large part, we've done that over a long period of time with many, many partners. And it's a broad coalition that we have. We've had strong support from the city of Salisbury and other municipalities in the county over a long period of time. So it's an honor for me to be in this position. I'm from Salisbury, and there's no greater intrinsic value than promoting your hometown to industries and employers throughout the country. But if I can, I'll highlight three of the larger focus areas which we're focusing these days. And one, we've got great assets in the city of Salisbury and throughout the community and the Lower Eastern Shore. One of those assets is the Salisbury Regional Airport. And as you know, we've been working for several years now to establish an aviation maintenance technician school at the airport. The airport has roughly $150 million economic impact to region, and that's in large part due to the presence of scheduled airline service provided by Piedmont Airlines, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of American Airlines. The line between the jurisdictional line and Salisbury and the county are very, very blurred. They have a large presence, the company has a large presence on the field or the airfield, but they also have a couple of facilities within the corporate limits of Salisbury and a significant number of jobs within the corporate limits of Salisbury. The tens of thousands of passengers going in and out of that terminal every year and the dollars that come in and out of that terminal every year inevitably and undoubtedly find, many find their way to the city of Salisbury. So it's very much intertwined. Residents and businesses alike are reliant upon that airfield. And not every community, it's a differentiating factor, and not every community has that presence. One of the, we knew several years ago that there was a shortage of pilots and shortage of aviation mechanics. We knew several years ago, on the other side of the pandemic, the situation would be likely much worse, and I think that's been proven to be the case. And so we started working to establish a pipeline of talent so we can train local people for jobs that are already here vacant on the grounds of the airfield. And I think it's kind of an analogous to the start of the welding school that we did about 10 years ago, and you look at the growth of Chesapeake Shipbuilding. And I think they'll tell you, I'm not sure they could have that growth rate but for the talent that's coming out and the training that's happening in the welding arena. And whoever's sitting around these tables, perhaps 10 years from now, may very well look back and say, but for this aviation school, I'm not sure we would have the new destinations or the growth in the aviation and the aeronautics sector that we might experience in the future. And so for the past two and a half years or so, we've been working to establish a Part 147 FAA certified program. Our partner in operating this school is the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. And it's not an inexpensive endeavor. It's not a short endeavor to establish, and we're knee deep in that certification process right now, anticipating the open with a 12, 25-person cohort in January of 2025. So it's right around the corner. And you're seeing the cooperation and collaboration of local governments, and I include the city of Salisbury since you're part of SWED and your water and sewer lines are now out there and you have a presence. Again, those lines are very, very blurred. Working together with the airlines, the state government, and HBCU with a large presence of aviation, including an aviation science degree, a pilot training program, and an aviation maintenance technician school. It's perhaps unparalleled anywhere else in America, that combination. And it's a signature program we're designing and establishing, and I think you'll see significant growth at the airport in the years to come. We're already talking to a number of prospects, inclusive of the current prospects that are a customer base at the airport, that I'm not sure we would be having those conversations on growth but for the presence of this school. So we'll talk more about that as the year progresses and we get that certificate, which is what we're waiting on at this point in time. Second subject, as you talk a little bit about the industrial base and tax base and what we might expect in the coming years. As we ride out west on 50 and you ride by Westwood Commerce Park, you've seen the removal of some trees on that front lots. It's about 16, 17 acres or so in St. John Properties, and they have signs up now. Baltimore has discovered the greater Salisbury area, they've acquired or are acquiring a significant amount of acreage. And they build on a speculative basis, and typically in 40,000 square foot sections. When one is half full, they'll build another, and when that's half full, they'll build another. It's a significant investment, and I think it's indicative of perhaps the confidence there see in the future of Salisbury and the greater Salisbury area. Along similar lines, we have a number, two other prospects, actually three other prospects, but one's out there a little bit. Two that we anticipate new construction happening within the next 18 months or so. And it's about 100,000 square feet total for two decent sized industrial prospects with a number of new jobs I think we can expect in the future. Again, I'm happy to talk more about that as 2024 progresses and even into early 2025. Third, we are short large bay industrial space. And typically, we get calls from real estate brokers or corporate real estate people, and they say, Dave, do we have 100,000 square foot, 32-foot ceilings, 50-foot column with 18 loading docks on 25 acres available that we can move into quickly? And the answer is yes, or the answer is no. And more often than not, if it's no, then they'll move on until they find that somewhere in that mid-Atlantic region or if that's where they need to be. So we're designing a shovel-ready or pad-ready site approval process or site program where we partner with a landowner and we design the, or fund the design of a large, in this case, 100,000 square foot facility, expandable to 200,000. Again, this is different than the St. John Properties, but it's this large industrial manufacturing, distribution type space. We design that facility and we go through the site approval process, and we mitigate for the customer, the client that calls that at 15-month, 18-month, sometimes 24-month time it takes to get site approval. And you see it, you see development happening, see front loaders and bulldozers and piles of dirt, and then they stop, and they start, and then stop, and they start, and they're getting permits along the way, and that's what takes the time. And then when they start construction, it goes up fairly quickly. So we want to mitigate that upfront development cycle and proceed. So if someone calls, we can tweak the design, if you will, and proceed right to construction. And the sooner we can do that without breaking, you know, rules and regs, but the sooner we can do that, the higher tax base we get and the more jobs we get on a faster rate. So those latter two projects, you're looking at roughly $75 to $80 million and so in real property investments over the next, we anticipate, next two, two and a half years or so. So there's the three upfront projects I have, and I'm happy to, I want to leave some questions. I don't want to take all the chief's side. I don't mind getting, picking a fight, a few people, chief's not one of them, so I don't, I want to leave some time for them. I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate your support.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ryan, for that overview, and I think this is good for, want us to know, but also our citizens. And so kind of connecting the dots, and I was actually just speaking with Councilwoman Gregory and I, we just had a meeting last week, and we were near, I think the mayor was there as well, and we were near Campbell Soup, the old Campbell Soup building, right? So when I was younger, that was, a couple of my family members worked there, and so that oftentimes, people in our area, they see the lack of those industries as the lack of kind of the economic impact that we should be having in our area. So can you just briefly speak to that and kind of connect the dots with roughly, you know, the jobs that are coming into the area, the tax base that this is going to improve? Like, how will this impact our residents day to day or kind of year to year? What will this do for Salisbury? I think that's where we need to do a little bit of better job of connecting the dots. When we say these big terms and we're bringing this 100, 1,000 square foot building, okay, but what does that really mean? What does this look like for Salisbury?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and there's no question, the Salisbury and other communities in our country have seen a decline in the manufacturing sector over a long period of time. So as we move forward, diversification of the economy is good. Distribution is way bigger today than it used to be, all fair game. But what that means is 85,000 square feet at $200 a square foot, something like that, perhaps a little bit more in terms of real property. That excludes any personal property, excludes any commerce you get from jobs, but those projects I mentioned, the number, the job count is, or the estimate is somewhere in the 300 job count range, so it's not insignificant. And it's important to keep in mind that Salisbury's manufacturing base is about 11% or so, and the country is like 6.5%, 7%. So that doesn't make the Campbell's plant that used to be, or the Dresser plant that used to be, or the Crown plant that used to, it doesn't make that any easier, but economic forces can overwhelm some of the best of intentions. So it's important to have those sites readily available, so a reasonable competitive cost structure so that when we do get prospects, we can attract them, we have a place for them to go. Not dissimilar to the housing market, the same thing where there's a short housing supply, same thing in the industrial market, short industrial. We're blessed that we do have a lot of legacy type companies. If you look at Purdue or Chesapeake and Piedmont Airlines, been here since 1970, Delaware Elevator, and the list will go on. So we hope to bring further diversification of the economy and, or jobs. And investments in the infrastructure is good, and investments in workforce development is terrific, and I think we're doing that.
And not, I want to make sure that my other council members, if they have questions, but my last and final is, without releasing too much that you can't release, these are quote unquote, again, seeing how persons related those jobs to, you know, the stability, these are what people would call good, you know, jobs that we can make a career out of, kind of, again, you have the manufacturing component of it, but these are jobs that you, people can see themselves.
Yes, sir, I believe so. And I'm not trying to be clandestine, I just don't, we don't have to tell our competitors who we're dealing with either, so.
Good, well, thank you for that, council members.
Of course.
I just have one question. Is there, are there any plans or is something in place for the use of the Campbell Soup facility?
Well, it was purchased not too long ago by an entrepreneur here, and it's divided up inside.
Okay.
And it's home to, I think, three or four businesses at this point in time.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, you know, Dave and I go way back personally, we go back in the banking world, and I think one of the things I recognize as I've gotten to in this role is that the market has changed, that you're doing the very thing we need you to do, which is partner with a private, and B, to use Chief Frampton's line, cost of readiness, which is getting a building spec'd out and ready, because those employers tend to be bigger, they tend to pay more, and they tend to stay around longer. So, and those are the kind of jobs that we're looking to attract, and we appreciate that you're that forward thinking and being involved in that kind of work, so we appreciate it.
Well, you've been a big supporter, and the council's been a big supporter, we appreciate that. You know, we've built two speculative buildings before, and one in the 80s and one in the 90s. I wasn't here in the 80s, but the 90s are fair game. That's home to Pepsi and Coke, as fate would have it right now. The environment's changed, the financing has changed, so, but this is what we can do. And in my experience, when someone comes into those speculative type buildings, which consists really of four walls, a dirt floor and a ceiling, it takes just as much time for them to design, to their, tailoring it to their needs as it might to start from scratch tailored to their needs. That site approval process is different. We need to mitigate that to be more competitive in the marketplace. And I think that's what you're saying, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just remind my board that.
We'll put in a good word. Seeing, just barring the public comments, Mr. Ryan, we appreciate you, and hopefully we can have you back in about six months to a year or so, whatever time you think.
Anytime you'd like, be happy to come in.
Good, perfect, thank you. Well, we appreciate your time.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our fire chief, Rob Frampton, with a second quarter Salisbury Fire Department statistical update.
Good afternoon, President.
Good afternoon.
Mayor. So come before you this afternoon to provide the first half statistical update. We've kind of been doing this on a quarterly basis, so I believe it was in your packet, so I'm going to kind of go through it, and I'll answer any questions at the end. So no surprise, call volume has increased first half 2023 compared to first half 2024, an increase of 7.4% or 560 more calls so far this year. I don't want to say it's alarming, obviously the city's growing both within the municipal boundaries as well as outside of municipal boundaries, so that increase.
Rob, sorry, you want to click forward?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Do you have the ability to?
I thought it did. There we go. Okay, yeah, I might need you to do it. So you can see there on the right-hand side, the call increases percentage-wise. Fire calls are up 11.5%. There's a few reasons for that, I'll get into that, and some of that has to do with mutual aid responses and some changes at the county level that are pushed down upon us. But one thing I like to break out is the total fire unit responses of 3,332. And that just, I do that because that helps to show the wear and tear on our engines and trucks that they're going up and down the street and the abuse that they take. So outside of that 2,090 calls, it's actually 3,332 responses. So that just shows kind of the impact on our vehicle maintenance costs over the year. So if you can go to the next one. This is just a chart here that shows the increases year over year from 2023 to 2024. Next slide kind of breaks it out into a little bit more detail versus incorporated and unincorporated districts to kind of see where the increases and the decreases are. One thing that did kind of stand out, I'm not really quite sure why, was the EMS calls outside of our fire district have gone down year over year. I think that probably initially has to do with outside units increasing their staffing, so Delmar's added on some staffing, I know Hebron's added some staffing for EMS calls. So we're not going outside of our district EMS call-wise, but if you look at the fire call amounts outside of our district, that's up 60%, which we knew it was going to be a little bit higher because the county has pushed down some changes. That's put two fire units on all calls that are on highway speeds, or highways with speeds of over 55 miles an hour. And that's for safety of first responders. If you do any kind of Google search or any kind of social media search, fire engines, ambulances, police officers are getting hit all the time on high-speed roads. So countywide now, any incident, you'll get two capital pieces. So that involves us going to Delmar Moore with a fire unit, or Parsonburg, Fruitland on the bypass, and then out to Hebron. So that's kind of why you see that. And then additionally, just to get manpower on the scene, the county has implemented more units responding to structured fires. So that's pulling our units in different directions as well. The next slide is just a chart that kind of shows the increase overall on those. Some people like the charts better, so just keep them in there. Next, I just want to talk briefly about EMS and SWIFT and our MDCN. SWIFT and MDCN are kind of together, so 23 witness cardiac arrests and 68 unwitnessed cardiac arrests in the first half of 2024. So it basically spells itself out, witness, means somebody was there, they may or may not have been able to start CPR, hopefully they do, hopefully they're trained. If not, we do offer those classes the last Wednesday of every month, I believe, but you can call the firehouse to sign up. So, and with that, we had 13 successful resuscitation. So there's 13 people in the first half of 2024 that are walking around thanks to the Salisbury Fire Department. 45 opioid-related calls that we responded to. Everybody's aware of the opioid crisis, and the department has taken some action with regards to taking that on head-on. So the city's received some opioid funds from some pharmaceutical companies over the last year and a half, and we're starting to deploy some of those funds specifically with the purchase of a opioid response vehicle that will have both Narcan and Buprenorphine, which is a new protocol that we're implementing, will be one of the first departments in the state to do this. And what that is, is a person has to want to be in a rehab program, and it is long-term to keep them off from a relapse. So once that vehicle comes in, in August, we'll be putting that unit in service, so you'll see it around town, and it'll also be helping with some of the SWIFT MDCN functions as well. So our average EMS unit response time continues to be, well, for our Charlie Delta and Echo priority calls, five minutes and 54 seconds is our average. We did enroll 19 new patients into SWIFT in the first half of 2024, and the non-urgent part of SWIFT, the MDCN, has responded over 600 calls for service and treated 165 patients and prevented them from being transported to the ER. So that's, again, part of that joint relationship between us, Title Health, and the County Health Department, that we've prevented 165 people from needing to be transported and bogged down the ER system with an estimated reduction in ED visits of 333,000. The one thing I will say about that is our main community paramedic position with SWIFT is grant-funded, and there are some grants that are pending with Title Health to keep that going, but there is, more and more people are getting into the mobile integrated health field, and those grants are drying up. So we just need to keep our eye on alternative funding mechanisms or possibly making that a full-time, you know, position in the future. Next slide. Yep, you're good. Billing-wise, we're actually trending above budget here with billing, so you can see what was actually gross charge and then what was collected for the second quarter and then annualized out, but we're on pace to be above budget, and that's due to the call increase that we've had. So that in turn is one of the, one of the positives of having more calls is that it tends to generate a little bit more revenue for the city. Next slide. Little bit from the fire marshal's office. So first half property value saved from fire was over $36 million, so that shows the true value of the fire service and your fire department being able to respond to calls. With that being said, there was over $2 million lost. If you remember, we had a significant fire at the laundromat in the first half and also at the apartment building out off Sharon Drive. Both those buildings were non-sprinkled, by the way. So again, a big push for sprinklers in buildings to help keep those things under control. Our fire marshal's office is very active. We were short for about two months due to our deputy fire marshal transferred out and then getting that position refilled and started. That gentleman actually started today. So even being down one person for two months of the first half, they completed 96 building reviews, 444 occupancy inspections, and generated over $291,000 in revenue in the first half of 2024, and they're anticipated to be over budget with their revenues for the year if we keep up what we're doing. We've also started doing fire investigations in conjunction with the fire marshal's office, so we're deploying our fire marshal to fires within our fire district, not from a criminal standpoint but from a causal standpoint. So we want to find out what the cause and origin was and what we can do through community programs and through interacting with children and parents and things like that to help reduce the fire damage and the property loss. So we responded to 15 fire calls, and thank goodness, there's civilian fire deaths and only two fire injuries so far in the first half. The next two things are sick hours and FMLA hours. I think it's important to break those out to just kind of see the overall health of our employment, of our employees. So we are trending slightly higher than 2023, but not where I would be where it's really significant number there. To break down the community events as well, we participated in the PTSD 911 documentary along with the police chief and myself. We were on the speakers panel of that event, which was focused on informing the general public about first responder mental health and wellness, and it was a great program. We also sent three people along with a GIS analyst to the symposium in Fairfax County for a day. We've definitely solidified our relationship with the GIS department here in the city, and you'll be seeing a lot of dashboards coming out, we're beta testing them right now, but they will be instant information, and it makes almost all of our forms electronic, and it's just, it's going to be a really neat thing that I'll present to you when the time comes. Along with many other things, Family Fun Day at the city park, and we also were able to cancer test over 90 of our members thanks to the grant that was accepted in FY24 for cancer testing for all members. So, and then the last slide, just a few of our personnel successes. So I touched on the vehicle that was ordered for SWIFT. Anybody that follows the fire service or any kind of new trends is aware of lithium ion battery fires. I mean, just look around at all the lithium ion batteries that are here. We've had a few incidents within our fire district, but we're looking internally at ways we can improve our response, our safety messages, and then the big thing is disposal after the fact. So the fire marshal's office and a committee within are working on that. We did have five paramedic students graduate from Warwick's Community College, which is great. That helps us tremendously. And the fire marshal's office was able to complete some drone training, which you might laugh on the surface, but it's big, drones are definitely coming to bear a lot of fruit in the fire service, and it's a lot to do with pre-incident planning, getting that bird's eye view of a building being built or an area. We don't have the large thousand-acre wildfires here, but out west, that's what they're using them for there, but we could definitely have that here and also large area searches for, you know, missing adults and children that might get out. And very proud of the fact that our SWIFT and MIH team were selected to make national presentations upcoming in Dallas in August and Las Vegas in September about the great work that their programs are doing here in Salisbury. So they're going on a national stage. Two different So they're going on a national stage two different times this year for that. So, and the last thing I have that I added, it's not on the slide up there. Last meeting Councilwoman Gregory asked for some stats about retainment and employment pools and things like that. So currently, there are no vacancies within the fire department. Part of that is due to the SAFER grant that requires us to, to not have any vacancies, so we've been able to keep those full. I was actually surprised by this. The average age of our employees is thirty-seven years old. I thought we were a younger department than that, but some of us older guys must run that number.
That is young. That is young.
I actually, with the SAFER grant and the young, a lot of young employees under the ages of, of twenty-seven, I thought it was going to be lower. But our current staffing level, minimum staffing level is nineteen people per shift. So that's three people on an engine, and we staff two engines. There's four people on our ladder truck. We do one ladder truck. And three ALS ambulances with a paramedic and an EMT on each one, and then one BLS ambulance, which is two EMTs and then a duty chief. Total time on the job is about ten years. I was actually surprised by that, too, with the SAFER grant being, you know, less than three years. I thought a lot of our, our time would be that, but we currently have a hundred and two employees and thirty-seven active volunteers. We are struggling with recruitment like every other public safety entity across the country, whether it's volunteer or whether it's career position. You know, when I tested, I think we had thirty or forty people test. The last time we tested, we had six. You know, one of the things locally that we've started doing, or that we've worked with the county fire service as well, is the revamping of the CTE and the VOTAC program. So you're going to see that in the fall. The county's rolling that out. They're enrolling students now. I think they're going to have upwards of fifteen. And we have started our cadet program back, and hopefully expect to have about five of those fifteen people in our cadet program. So if you want more information, I can dig a little deeper and certainly do some stuff, but I threw that together kind of at the end for you, so.
Thank you so much.
And I'll take any questions that anybody might have.
You didn't, you didn't leave much, that was good, a good update of what it's looked like. I think the only thing, I mean, it's, I follow all of our social media pages pretty, pretty good, and you all do a good job of explaining the work you do in the community. I think we all appreciate that, and I, whenever I speak to, you know, any of the employees or whether they have, you know, they have good energy between, you know, the guys and the, and the ladies and the people over there, so that's always good. And just a shout out, that, that junior fire academy, they look really fun. I wish I could have got over there, but.
Me too.
You know, I, I do have to work, so I tried to get over there to see the kids over there, but they looked, they had a blast.
They did. It was a great week.
Yeah.
Great week for them and for us.
Yeah. Councilwoman?
I, I don't know if you know this, it could be more administration, but going back to the slide for let's take a deeper dive in regards to outside of the Salisbury Fire Department District calls and even unincorporated, and then with the county's requirement to meet those roads for fifty-five plus. What, have, do we have any updates on, on our fire service agreement with the county? We, we do serve them of.
Do you want to? So we've had some very good, the mayor and myself met with a few county council members a couple of weeks ago. We had some very good discussion and some dialogue, and there's a lot of things in progress to get the funding that, I don't want to say was cut, but that initially was proposed at two million, and then we were funded at one point six. There's been some discussion to get that back, and it's moving in the right direction. And then we have plans in early August to begin a long-term fire service agreement discussion with the county council. So I would say that it is trending in a very positive direction.
Right here, that's in a positive direction.
Right here, it's a very data-driven, the data.
Yes. We've been asked a lot, both financially and data, which is fine. We're all about the data, and we can provide that, and we have given that. So, you know, I might have more of an update for you after.
Well, I'll make the ask again. I know we asked it before, but council would love to be a part of those conversations. So if you could remember that, you know, we would love to just, I mean, since it does affect our residents and us on the council level, so we would love to be a part of that conversation, the one in August.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. That was outstanding, as always, as always.
I just want to, again, praise you guys, your EMTs and your responses, they're always so quick, so prompt, and.
Thank you.
So, you know, professional and, and, you know, but they also have a, a caring touch, and I'm really always so appreciative of, of all the employees when they come out for us. So I really am very, very grateful and very thankful that we have the fire department that we have.
Very much.
Chief, on this, I want to ask one, the Fire Marshal's Office.
Yes.
Is that revenue neutral? Is that revenue neutral for us? I mean, we capture as much as we spend in that department?
It's revenue positive.
I was going to say, I thought it might be, that, that recovery.
Yeah, we especially.
I never dug that deacon to it.
Yeah, so the goal of the Fire Marshal's Office is to not bring somebody on unless they can sustain in their position so that they're not costing the city anything. So we could actually use another, another inspector, because we're not, with the four hundred and forty-four occupancies that we're inspecting a year, or I mean, expecting every six months, it's about nine hundred, it's probably a thousand if we had a full-time, if that, we hadn't lost the individual for two months. But if we had another one, there's about three thousand, I think, commercial occupancies in.
I know we talked about during the negotiation of the county, but the ambulance reimbursements, what's the justification? Why is it we bill at X and we get thirty cents on the dollar? I mean, do they have a fixed amount that they pay?
Yes. So, so it's fixed amount, whether, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, or private payer and all that comes through the billing company could get them here for you if you want them to fucking roll to it, because there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, but a lot of it is write-downs and, you know, flat fees that, that, you know, Medicare is only going to pay this regardless. And then we tend to go after them over the last two years for the ESP money, which was, you know, additional above and beyond that we go through the state to get that money, which was about another eight hundred to nine hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
So.
Just, I want to put an ad out here for anybody in the public who has a child between the ages, I think, twelve to sixteen. The fire department, their junior fire academy was energy-filled, one of the hottest weeks of the summer, and they had these young kids just flying around that day. They just were amazing. And Zach Bridges did a really good job taking the lead on that, but they're going to do one for older children in August. So if you're interested, check it out because.
There might be one or two spots left, but August fifth through the ninth from twelve years old to sixteen years old.
Yeah. So, I mean, they're not just firemen jumping on the trucks, and I don't mean to minimize your job. They're involved in all parts of the community and public relations, and this is what we need for our young children as well.
Absolutely.
So kudos.
Thank you.
All right. We do have one public comment, Vaughn Sickers.
Good afternoon, Vaughn Sickers, city resident. I was going to ask if you could expound upon your youth program, dates, times, when those are available. I remember once upon a time, way back when, we had CPR classes and what have you through the fire department, and I just wondered if something of that sort could be offered again to our youth. I've known of our youth who have participated in those programs and have actually utilized those skills that they were taught, so I was just wondering if something like that could be.
Sure. Were you talking about the cadet program, or were you talking about the junior fire academy, times, dates, and times?
Both, those, and if that included CPR and what have you.
So the junior fire program, junior fire academy is all.
Chief, I want to make sure you don't, I don't want to cut your time, so if you have any other questions, I want to make sure you get it all out.
Yeah, sure.
Also, we have what some people refer to as tent city, or I call them forest dwellers. They're people who are actually living in tents in the forest. When they have emergencies, do you respond to those people? You do respond?
All right, yeah, I don't want to cut you off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As a past council, you, you, yes, you know the, okay.
But we had some interaction.
I understand, but.
But anyway, I, I just wondered if that service is available to those persons who dwell in the forest. I had comment recently from one who needed service during the wee hours, and they were told that, that your service don't come out there. And so they had to search and find somebody to respond to them, and I just wondered.
Okay. The junior fire academy is August fifth through the ninth from eight AM to three PM. There might be one or two more spots available for kids between the ages of twelve and sixteen, but you would have to call fire headquarters for that. The cadet program, call fire headquarters, fill out an application, and, you know, as long as they're above the age of sixteen, they can come, they can join. It's limited into what they can do, but in their hours, and we'll set all that, that forth for them, and they get their training. CPR classes, the last Wednesday of every month at six, I believe, I believe it's the last Wednesday. Chief Tows is actually the instructor for that, so he's still doing that kind of, kind of on the side for us. If it's a group that wants a class, you can certainly reach out to fire headquarters and say, hey, it's a group, and we'll set something up during the day for us to come out. And, you know, as long as they meet the age requirements to take CPR from AHA, we're fine with teaching whoever. And then you mentioned about tent city. Yes. So we have certain patients that, that live in the different areas out in the wilderness that we see on a regular basis. We routinely go to calls at those various locations, and we may or may not transport depending on the nature of it. But yes, we, I don't want to say daily, are going to out into the woods, some of those tent cities, but every other day. And the services of SWIFT are Monday through Friday from about eight to four. So if they called for a non-emergent response on a night or weekend, they may, they would have gotten an ambulance, but they may not have gotten that SWIFT follow-up. But we do have a SWIFT referral in place where they would have been referred and then followed up. A lot of our time is, a lot of our difficulty is tracking them down. We'll go to make a visit and they're not there. Nobody knows where they are, they haven't seen them. But yes, we are very involved with that, that portion of our community.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief.
CPR, I'm sorry.
I just.
You can get with me.
Yes.
Just get with me afterwards.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sickers.